All right, we call the meeting to order. This is the Village of Oxford Planning Commission meeting for the 5th of February in 2019. And we have a limited agenda tonight, so let's get started and get right through it. I'd like to have us all please stand, and please join me as we pay our respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, like I said, we have a very limited agenda tonight, so we should be able to get through this meeting rather quickly. Madam Secretary, if you'd be kind enough to call the roll for me this evening.
Bama?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Deeg? Absent. Douglas?
Here.
Thomas?
Yes.
Ballard?
Here.
And Pilak?
Here.
Making a motion to excuse Gary Deeg from the February 5 regular meeting?
Second.
All right, Madam Secretary, I have a motion on the table to excuse the absence of Commissioner Deeg for this evening's meeting. I have a second on that motion also. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good. That's carried. Gary's absence is excused, and I'd like to extend great thanks to Gary Deeg for all of his service to this commission over the years. Thank you very much, Gary. Moving on, I would like to entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. I think you all have that in front of you.
I move to approve the agenda for February 5 at 7:00.
All right, thank you very much. I have a motion.
Second.
All right, I have a second for that. Madam Secretary, I have a motion on the table to approve tonight's agenda as submitted and before us at this time. All those in favor of adopting this agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good, we have an approved agenda. We can move forward. I'd also like to entertain a motion to have the minutes from the previous meeting approved, and I'll leave that open. Those minutes are before you, and I hope you've all had a chance to read through them, and we can accept these minutes as they're submitted.
Quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, Deeg is mentioned as present and absent.
Oh.
And I just noticed.
Where's that?
Under roll call.
12:00. Okay.
I don't think he was here.
No, he wasn't.
Okay, next sentence, you're excusing him.
Right.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
All right, Madam Secretary, I have a motion to approve tonight's, or the previous minute, sorry, previous meeting's minutes with an amendment offered for the removal of Gary Deeg from roll call as being present, and I have a motion on that. All those in favor accepting tonight's minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good, we now have approved minutes. Madam Secretary, I did not notice any correspondence other than the report submitted by our planner. Were there any other correspondence that we need to accept and file?
I did receive, just a couple days ago, a notice from Oakland County regarding the master plan update for Oxford Township. I believe you were sent one as well. It says you were CC'd on it. And Mario, did you receive one?
No, I haven't.
Well, I have extra copies here if you wanted to.
Yeah, Terry, I'm sorry I did not. I did not see that come down at all.
Thought you just didn't love us.
But they, by law, you're required to notice the adjacent communities that they're going through a master plan update, so that you can offer comments, and they would appreciate the comments being made by Thursday, March 14, 2019.
Okay. All right, did everybody get a copy of that?
Yes.
Yes.
Leslie, you got one also?
Yes, I do.
Okay, good. Are we allowed then to accept this correspondence and file it?
I'll make a motion to receive and file the letter from Oakland County.
Second.
All right, Madam Secretary, I now have a motion on the table and a second to file the correspondence letter from Oakland County Economic Development and Community Affairs dated 25th of January. I have a motion for that and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good, all right, that'll be accepted, and I'll review this later. All right, we do not have a public hearing tonight. We do not have any old business, and we do have three items under new business, which are the 2018 annual review, B, the election of new officers for the commission, and C, the 2019 action plan. We'd like to start off with item A, which is the 2018 annual review, and Mario, if you'd be so kind, take it away.
Evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mario.
Tonight, we're here just to go over our submittal to the village council. Per the Planning Enabling Act, every year, the Planning Commission must submit a brief summary report of the actions over the past year. So that's why this report in front of you is pretty straightforward. We just list the number of meetings we held. There were 11 meetings. We list the composition of the board, so that way they're aware of all the people that volunteer their time. And then we go over some of the applications. You know, we've approved, in 2018, you approved, considered, three special use permits, one site plan. You amended your bylaws to reflect the planning commission membership, and then there were several zoning ordinance amendments that we discussed with regards to your role in that aspect of trying to take, being diligent in reviewing the ordinance for compliance with master plan goals and objectives, most notably, of course, being the recently being outdoor sales. So it's intended to be a very brief summary, but it's to make sure that the council is informed of all your actions.
Question, Mario? Before you go on, regarding the zoning amendments, you know, one of the awkward parts about working on the commission is that we create these bodies of work, and then we send them off, and oftentimes, we don't hear back about what the status of those are. Would you happen to have any information on those? Or Maureen, perhaps maybe you could fill me in if there's action pending, or whether action has been taken?
I can't do it without a list of, we haven't gone against a recommendation of the Planning Commission this year, the council. However, the council has not met since our last meeting.
Okay.
So we did not take action on last month's proposal.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand that.
But I don't believe we went against any recommendation of the Planning Commission last.
All right, good, I appreciate that. Thank you. Go ahead, Mario, sorry to interrupt.
No, that's funny. And really, that's really the summary of the report, and then it attached the same report as the action plan, so we can go over that now, or we can? And mainly, you know, we started discussing this in late 2018. We wanted to just go over the broad issues that could be, that you wanted to see, brainstormed with regard to the planning-related issues. And what you see in front of you is just a list of various topics that we could consider during our actions, but these, and one thing I want to emphasize, that these various items are with regards to the topics that the Planning Enabling Statute gives to the Planning Commission. There are definitely other topics that, you know, have a planning-related aspect to them, but they're generally under the purview of the council. The council has the authority for a lot of the executive authority and final decision-making, and what they can do is if they find, if they feel they need some further research, or they want to gain further opinion, they can ask one of the bodies that they have authority with to, for their input. So for example, when it comes to the paving project, and when it comes to the economic development of downtown, you know, there are definitely planning-related aspects to that, but it's, but you know, we do have the DDA. The DDA is tasked with the economic development in that case. So that's why these, or these issues in front of you are the ones that generally are more in the purview of the planning commission. So those, and they're not listed in any order of priority.
Thank you, that was going to be one of my questions, Mario. I know we have talked about this in the past, and we've discussed many of these topics, but I wasn't really certain if this was presented in terms of what you or we viewed as priority, or just this is a random list of things that we've talked about.
It's definitely a random list, because while these are the issues, once again, I said, we could consider, if another topic comes up during the course of the year that demands immediate attention, for example, if the council directs us to deal with outdoor sales, like that wasn't necessarily part of the 2018 plan, but it's something that came up and that's something that we had to address. So it's, it's based on, it's a randomized list of our discussions, and that's how it's, it's no particular order of priority.
All right, thank you very much. Just a second, Mario. Jack, please.
We have two items, correct? The Planning Commission annual report, and then secondly, which is C, the 2019 plan. Do we have to recommend to the village council that they accept the Planning Commission annual report?
Yes, yeah, you do have to do that, and then...
And then we discuss the action plan and go through, and?
You could do them separately, or you could do them together. It'd probably be best if you make it simpler, to just do them together, because it's really, once again, just a bulleted list of random projects that, and the intent is to let the council know.
What we're planning, what we'd like to consider looking at.
That you're thinking about things, and they might have their own opinion and direct you, they might say, oh, this is a great idea, we'd like to make this a priority.
I think it's two separate orders.
Or they might, or you might say, oh, well, there's one other thing you'd like to add on your randomizing.
All right, Rose, please.
I think that we should keep them separate.
Okay.
I think we should do the annual report and then take the 2019 action plan. They're just two distinct, different documents.
However, it does make sense to submit them to the council. Would you agree?
Oh, yeah, I was just going to say...
Even if you submit them as two separate documents, I mean, I think they sort of go hand in hand here as a submission to the council, and there's certainly no reason why we couldn't consider them separately.
They'd have to be considered separately, because one's 2019 and one 2018.
That's correct.
One's an annual report and the other one's a...
That's correct. So Mario, I guess let's, let's go. Everybody agree that that's how we should present these documents, without a motion?
Well, you can...
Or any, any other thoughts about this?
You would recommend that the 2018 Planning Commission annual report and action plan recommend to the village council that this is our, this was our, this is our commission annual report for your acceptance. Then when we do the action plan, we may change some things in here after we discuss it and add some things, or take something off that we could say we recommend to the village council that we'd like, or we believe that this is what we should be working on. The village council then has an opportunity to say yea or nay on what you're working on.
Correct.
All right, so then let's address the annual report first, as submitted by Mario. Are there any discussion or changes that anyone would like to see on this report?
Mario, I have one comment that I would like to make on this. Under the planning commissioners, in addition to the names, I would also like to see the term, if possible, if you have access to that information. I think that would be handy to give to the council so that they know, they just, they have that information, you know, they'd, if somebody's, you know, with the situation we ran into with Commissioner Deeg, his term expired some time ago.
December.
But nobody knew about it, you know, because there was, you know, we were going through a change in staff, sorry, a change in staffing and et cetera, and that's unfortunately something that fell through the crack. And so it's one bit of information I would like to provide to council, just as a little reminder. Here's how long this person has their term, and at some point, either we're going to keep them and that term is going to be renewed, or we're going to look for a replacement, something like that.
Mr. Chairman, we have that list. We have an Excel spreadsheet with all the planning commissioners, their expiration dates, the zoning board, all the boards, and that is in the packet for the council this morning.
Okay, good, I appreciate that then.
And then I can provide that to you as well, if you'd like.
That would be nice. I'd appreciate that, Terry. So in that respect, then, I believe that's satisfied, Mario. Any questions?
And I think that the chairman should have a copy of that, just so that...
She just said, she just said she'd pass it along to me as well. So thank you for that, Terry, I appreciate that. Any other discussion or changes, additions, amendments you'd like to consider for our annual report?
I have none.
Mario, I thought this was well done. It's comprehensive and to the point without being a phone book, and I thank you for that.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am.
I'd like to move that we send the 2018 annual review report to council for...
All right, Madam Secretary, I have a motion to accept the 2018 Planning Commission annual report as submitted by our planner. I have, and that is submission to the village council, and I also have support for that motion, so I'd like to do a roll call on this. Probably not necessary, but I'll do it anyway, just because I like doing that once in a while.
Pilak?
Aye.
Ballard?
Yes.
Thomas?
Uh huh.
Douglas?
Yes.
Deeg is absent. Curtis?
Yes.
Bama?
Yes.
All right, good. That motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone. All right, so then, Mario, let's step ahead, and we'll go to, we'll go to item C, and we'll come back and do B as our last item of business this evening. In discussing our proposed plan of action, or action plan for this upcoming year, we've already spent a little bit of time discussing this, and in looking at this, there's obviously in these eight items, and like I said, it could include more, if we were so inclined, a tremendous amount of discussion, discussion could be created just by this sheet alone. And so I think because of that, it would, it would probably behoove us to try to look at this list from a standpoint of, are we able to prioritize this? What are the things that are most important, and perhaps, what are the things that we have a very good chance of, one, completing this year, and, two, are urgent? Is there anything on here that's urgent that should be dealt with right away? The ordinance review, to me, is very important. I don't know how urgent it is, but it's very important, and I think it's something I'd really like to try to focus on this year, just to try to identify, are there, are there things that need to be addressed here? And so...
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to go back and do election of officers before we do the action plan, because that's what our agenda stated, and we did not change things around.
All right, I can, I can do that. I rescind that, then, and say, let's go back and cover item B, then, and we'll do election of officers. I open up the floor to any nominations that want to be made.
I'd like to move that Gary Douglas continue as chairman for the Planning Commission.
I'll support that. I've been sitting on Hughes, she didn't say my name.
That's really funny, you know, I remember when I was a kid, I loved Warner Brothers cartoons, and Bugs Bunny was always one of my favorites, and Elmer Fudd was a great character. And every once in a while, when Bugs pulled something really fast over on Elmer, or Elmer did something extremely stupid, his head would turn into a big sucker. I don't know if that's pertinent here, but nevertheless, I thought, it's a story I like to tell, and so I like to say it. Madam Secretary, so should I do all these one at a time, so that, okay, all right, so I have a motion on the table to appoint the current chair as the new reigning chair for the next, the next year, and I have a second on that motion as well, so I'd like to have a roll call vote on that, so each commissioner gets to voice their opinion about the quality of my service.
Okay, Curtis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Oh, yes.
Pilak?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Bama?
Yes.
Deeg?
Absent.
I'm going to abstain from voting on that. I don't think it's necessary.
Is it a vote?
All right, I, well, yeah, I'm not going to vote no. I'll vote yes, too. Thank you very much, everybody.
I'll make a motion to appoint Justin Ballard as vice chair for the Planning Commission.
I like, I like that. That's a... Madam Secretary, I have a motion on the table to appoint my good friend, Justin Ballard, as the vice chair for the Planning Commission. I have second on that motion also. I'd like to do a roll call vote on that one as well.
Ballard?
Sure.
Douglas?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Bama?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Pilak?
Aye.
And Deeg is absent.
I think there's a conspiracy going on.
That's what it sounds like. It sounds like, once this happens, there's no way to stop it.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Leslie Pilak for secretary of the Planning Commission.
Support.
Now, what exactly does the secretary have responsibility for?
Title.
If Terry falls, she has to come down there and just make sure she's okay.
All right, well, Leslie, there's your responsibility. Madam Secretary, I have a motion on the table to accept my good friend, Leslie Pilak, as the, the council, I'm sorry, the commission secretary for the coming year. I have a motion and a second on that. All those in favor, let's do a roll call, if you don't mind.
Curtis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Oh, yeah.
Bama?
Yes.
Pilak?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Deeg is absent.
Leslie, congratulations. We're glad to have you on the board.
All right, now, is there, are there any, are there any other honorary titles we'd like to be out?
All right, so we, obviously, then, we don't get to vote on Mario, is that what you're telling me?
We're stuck with him.
Yeah, exactly. The council does that.
All right, Mario, we're glad to have you on board, buddy. Mario, you've been a wonderful addition to the commission, and I, once again, repeatedly, I will thank you with all my heart.
Kelsey, you have no idea how lucky you are that you weren't on the board yet.
Now, we have to wait until your second meeting. All right, so now, Rose?
Action plan.
Are you good to go?
I'm good to go.
Let's move on to C and talk about our action plan for a few moments. So like I said, at least from my point of view, and not that what I say matters or means anything, but I would like to look at this and say, okay, can we prioritize this list? Because, you know, I don't think we're, frankly, I don't think we're really prepared right now to do a lot of in-depth discussion about these things. I think we're going to have to start thinking about these. I would like to make it something that we're working on as we go forward, and not just meet because we have some business to deal with, but we have internal things that need to be taken care of. And so I'd like to put these kind of things on the agenda to say, this evening, we don't have a site plan to look at, let's talk about this, okay? And see if we can't continue to just push this rock up the hill a little bit, you know, to try to get some of these things hammered, hammered out. Leslie, you had a comment?
With the idea that setting, rank ordering these might be an onerous task, I wonder if we could zero in on three or four that we all could agree?
Certainly. I, you know, I don't feel like...
Well, the secretary is stuck getting pussy.
I agree, Leslie. I mean, I don't think that we have to try to put a number on each one of these, but my, my point is, I would like to identify, one, what is of most interest to the commission, the thing that we, you know, I mean, if we pick something we're interested in, we're probably going to want to work on it a little bit harder. And, two, are there things on this list that are urgent that need care right now?
I agree with all of that. I just was thinking, you know, it would be nice if everybody agreed these three or four, and then we don't have to worry about what's the most important, what's the next most important, we don't have to rank them in some way, which I think would be a lot of...
All right, so do you have a suggestion as to what you'd like to put on here in terms of things that we should get done this year?
Yes, I actually do.
Good, I'd like to hear it.
I agree, ordinance reviews makes a lot of sense. I think the legal nonconformities point, which is number five, and I'm a big fan of number four, because the village is poised to be able to take advantage of its recent survey, if we can take some action. And those three stand out for me right now.
Are we having any trouble at all with solicitation in the village? Terry?
Not that I've heard yet, but it's...
Okay, do we...
It's a summer thing.
Yeah.
Do you have something about solicitation?
Solicitation, yes.
Okay, please, go ahead.
That would probably be one of the easiest things you could do, is the township has already had its second reading and enacted the solicitation ordinance for the township. So if you wanted to mirror that, you could take a look at it, and...
That certainly, that makes it easy, doesn't it?
If it's a concern of the people in the village...
You know, like I said, a lot of it, to me, it comes down to, are we having problems with it?
Yep.
And Sue, can you add anything to that? Do you care to comment about that, or you just want to observe?
If I can comment, from here.
Sure, go right ahead.
No, he's got a swing camera.
Connie won't like it, but...
I can't walk up there.
All right.
My thing would be food trucks, because we've already had instances of food trucks within the community downtown, so, and there is no rule, but we've just been letting them do it.
Okay.
I might want to address that.
All right, I appreciate that. That's just what I wanted to hear. Mario, looking downrange, do we have access to existing best practices for food trucks that maybe we could get our hands on to?
I've had to deal with them.
All right, so let's, because that's easy, hopefully.
Sure.
Well, you know, and I'm saying that without having any idea what I'm getting myself into, but we do have access to it, and so soon, let's, let's include that on the agenda. Maybe not the most important thing, but soon, let's talk about that. You look like you have something to say.
I do. Because the ZBA is going through cleanup of their bylaws, I would think that we might want to look at the Planning Commission bylaws to make sure everything was dotted and crossed Ts and everything on that. I mean, that shouldn't be a difficult...
I think Terry might already be working on that, so...
Yeah, Mario and I had quite a discussion this evening on things that are already in the law that do not need to, you don't need to be encumbered with more restrictions, because, you know, when the law changes, then you have to change your bylaws, or in some cases, we have it in our charter.
Yeah, and I knew that you were working on that, and that's why I thought, well, that could be a, an easy one, too.
Yeah, Mario and I can probably put something together and bring it, not right away, but take a look at some of that stuff, and then you could see what you think.
I'm good with that. Justin, anything, anything to comment on these?
I do not at this point in time.
All right, so right now, we're looking at consideration of ordinance reviews, solicitation ordinance, because it's easy, perhaps, food trucks, because it's easy, perhaps, historic preservation, creating a list of existing legal nonconformities. I, okay, that, that strikes me as somewhat hard, but...
I think actually a very good idea. What I think is a very good idea, so it's probably not.
I'd love to hear it.
There are seven of us, but the seven of us know another 100 people in this town. I think we just get the village, give us a list of all the addresses in the village. I know, I definitely know what's going on in my street. I know what the legal, I know what it is, I know what it's supposed to be. And I think if we call people on all these streets, we're a little top-heavy on the southwest quadrant, you people. But, and you guys know what's going on in Dennison, you know what's going on in Pontiac, in Moyeron Park, and we knock out the streets that we do know, and the uses we do know, and we see what's left. Because you know if your neighbor's got a, do they have an apartment next door? Are they supposed to have an apartment next door? Is it listed as a multiple family or a single family? It's, I don't think it's going to be that difficult, because it's not that big a village, and we know everybody.
So you're really proposing that we start with the, the things that are easy to do, and not necessarily look at this as one sweeping task?
Right. Because there's going to be, you know, there's use, legal nonconformities, use, which we can do. Legal nonconforming structures, we're not going to know that that house sits two feet too close to the road necessarily, but we can do the use part, because we know whether or not 75 Pearl Street has an illegal apartment in their basement. It does not, by the way. No, it does not. Is it a single family? It is, so that's not, that's not a nonconformity. So, I don't, I don't think it's as difficult as it sounds, until you start getting on some streets that maybe we don't know anybody on, but there's not too many of those.
How many of us feel qualified to take that on?
Well, through observation and, and development, we find out these things. I'll give you the example, when we put Edison Alley in back there, the homeowner came and said, I want a driveway for the other house that's on my property. You have two houses on one piece of property.
Right.
That's, that's nonconforming, and it's something you can stop by splitting that piece off or closing that operation down. Now, you have a driveway going out onto Edison Alley, because one person has a house that's, it's not supposed to be there.
It's not that it's not supposed to be, it's legal nonconformity. It's been there for 75 years.
Yeah.
And there's a difference between legal nonconformity-
And just something-
And nonconformity. The fact that you used to have a whole section of the village that was multiple family, and there's still five houses that have two apartments in them, doesn't make, make it illegal, if they used to be legal. Now, they're just nonconformities.
Okay, all right, so now I have a really hard question. What is the point of this?
The village is supposed to have a list of nonconformities, I believe. Per, per our ordinance, we're supposed to keep a list of nonconformities.
Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct, because, because the, the purpose for that would be with a record of what is known legally nonconforming, when someone does establish, say, an apartment in a, in a house, or builds, or has, converts a, a garage into a single-family structure, then you know, well, you're not on the registry, so you're legally non, you're illegally nonconforming. So, that's the, the intent of that.
So, how do you typically know about a nonconformity? I mean, the first thing that occurs to me more is that I feel like this is an invasion of privacy.
Well, the village-
You know, I, I would be reluctant to walk around my neighborhood with a clipboard, making notes, and have somebody say, what do you think you're doing?
Okay, but you know, and then- If you, if you have two apartments in your house, in theory, you're supposed to be paying two water bills. So, if you're paying two water bills, the village already knows you've got a second apartment there. If you're not paying two water bills, how come? Is it because you illegally rented an apartment that's now nothing you really want people living in, which we have in this village? Or is it a decent, nice second apartment that just used to be a mother-in-law apartment and is just included on the scene? It's not, I'm not saying go up and ask these people, how many people got to live there?
And, and sometimes, one way that this can be dealt with is saying that we're gonna establish the list, starting from this day moving forward, and as, as cases come up, they're added to the list. When, Gary, you're asking about, you know, how do you really know if someone's illegal or not? Well, typically, if someone comes in and says, oh, well, I wanna put in a new, new bathroom. I'm like, oh, really? He's like, uh, yeah, because I'm gonna convert, convert it into an apartment. Well, then that's one way to do it. And if, if the building inspector goes in and they say, well, why is this, this kitchen already established when you didn't do it with any permits? That's how you can determine that, versus someone that's historically been there since the 40s, and you can tell by their construction. You can tell by that, oh, yeah, that addition, you know, the building inspector would know that it's that way. So, but one way to do it, and not necessarily be, you know, an active pursuit of, of going on to properties, would be to establish the list and start keeping record and add to it as incidents come in.
Madam Secretary, do we have a list of existing nonconformities?
Not that I know of.
So, even, even just establishing, saying, this spreadsheet is now our list of nonconformities, and we've got two. As you go, there's potential. That's, that's one way to approach it.
But we have a list of uses in the village.
Correct.
And those uses include some nonconformities, because there's two houses in my street, on Maple Street, which I'm on the corner of, that are multiple family. They've got a basement, or a first-floor apartment and a second-floor apartment. They have for, since they moved the houses there from somewhere else. And so those are legal nonconformities. They, one definitely pays two water bills. The other one, I believe, pays two water bills. So, that's what we listed on the village list, is having two apartments. So, that's a nonconformity, but it's a legal nonconformity. There's another one on First Street that gets two water bills. Is there another apartment in there that the village doesn't know about? Not that I know of. But if we find out in the future that there is, well, it's not on our list, so we put it on the list.
What about the house next door to the village?
The one next door to the village is legal nonconforming. They've had four apartments for years, but that's zone multiple family. Maple Street, single family.
Well, and, and for example, my house, our barn, is legally nonconforming because it's too close to the lot line. I would, I would kinda want that, you know, known and documented for purposes of, of saying that is, you know, legally nonconforming.
And that is one, another, a good way to approach it, is that you can, just by having a spreadsheet as a record in the village, and saying, if someone wants to establish their legal nonconformity, you know, please conform, because I would definitely agree, normally getting into trying to find out whether a, a building is set back the correct distance, you do not want to get into that, like actively going on looking. But if a homeowner says, I have this, it's because this barn was built in 1892 or something to that effect, that way, then it's on record that, that, that barn was that way, because it will, it will be part of homeowners' rights, for example, if that barn gets damaged. If that barn gets damaged, technically, if it's up to 75% of the trajectory of the structure, then they have to come into conformance. However, if they only are 50%, when they establish, we've had, I've had it in cases before where someone in good faith, they had, they had a damage to their structure, they went, they tore it down completely, because they said, I'm just gonna build a brand-new one, and then they came in, applied, oh, I wanna put it right where I, where I had.
And they can't do it.
You can no longer do that, because you did not have your legally nonconforming. You didn't leave the foundation, you didn't leave the right amount, so now you must set back the X number of feet. So, and, and it's not intended to, once again-
Penalize, yeah.
-actively police anyone. It's a matter of, for, for, so we're all on the same page, that, you know, someone, and then people can have the opportunity to establish themselves.
All right, so this is a lot more interesting than I thought it would be. And so, yeah, there's, I can see a rationale for doing that. Maureen, perfectly honest, I'm much more comfortable doing it the way Mario suggests than the way you suggested.
Well, that's fine.
And I'm, I, so I'd like to, I'd like to put a little tick next to this one and say, this is something we oughta really talk about here soon, because I thought this was very interesting. So, Leslie, I like your list of ordinance reviews, historic preservation, and legal nonconformities, and then we can just add to that solicitation, food trucks, and perhaps a review of existing bylaws, because it sounds to me like that's gonna be pretty much an approval aspect instead of actually drafting them, since work is ongoing on that right now. And so, any, any thoughts or comments on those?
We put them on the list, we must have wanted to do them.
There you are, you know?
I, I guess I do have one more-
Please, Leslie.
That, in terms of training for members, I wonder if, Mario, you would be willing to alert us if you know about training that you think would be of use to us in advance? And, and just as, you know, if you inform us, then we're actually also working on that in a way without actively taking a lot of time to investigate for something.
Definitely. There are definitely planning organizations that have events, usually throughout the state, but they always have them in southeast Michigan. So, that's number one. Some of them are free, depending on the membership status of the village, they might be free for a certain number of members. But then also, I've, I've led training sessions at meetings for, for my planning commissions and ZBAs. So, if we ever wanted to have a refresher course on basics of planning commission duties, that's something we could have during a meeting. Sometimes they, they do, they, they can't, sometimes the seminars can be long, but they could be condensed into an hour and a half, possibly, the sort of thing.
And this is written in such a way that suggests that you would be presenting us with a list for us to consider, anyway.
Yes.
Including this is not putting a burden on, on us that I could see. So, I would recommend, maybe we do leave this on the list.
For the training? All right, well, Mario, it looks to me like everything got onto the top of the list except for one-stop-ready status. If you, two things I would like on this list, if you'd be so kind. Proposed action plan for 2019, you have to add a date to it. And then I'd like you to reorganize this list and prioritize it. One, four, and five will be the highest priorities. Two, three, and seven will be lower priorities, and eight and six will be the lowest. Any, any comments on that? Yeah, I'll take that as a no. So, I, I would entertain a motion to submit such, said proposed action plan for 2019 to the village council.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Madam Secretary, I have a motion on the table to adopt and submit our proposed action plan for 2019 to the village council. I have a motion and a second for that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good, all right, our action plan is complete. I think that just about wraps us up for this evening, unless anybody else has anything else. Do we wanna do our traditional thing of talking about, well, let me do it right, because Rose will yell at me if I don't.
I'll hit you.
Public comment, we don't, Kelsey? Is there anything you'd like to say? Like I told you, I'm not gonna put you on the spot by putting you through an interview tonight, but if you'd like to step up to the podium and introduce yourself, give us your name and your address, and maybe give a little short spiel about who you are and-
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for having me. My name's Kelsey Cook. I look forward to hopefully serving on the planning commission. I think I can bring some experience with my current position. I'm a lawyer for Oakland County. I work for the Water Resources Commissioner. I deal with a lot of capital improvement projects, a lot of infrastructure work, a lot of construction projects. So, hopefully, I can bring some of that, I guess, knowledge base to the planning commission. I've reviewed the village's master plan, it's very impressive, so I'd love to see how the commission can continue to take steps forward, to implement that master plan, to hopefully someday have, you know, the village look the way it looks in the master plan, because it's pretty cool. So, I've been a resident of the village for three years now. I live at 50 West Verdic Street, so just a few houses down from the village office. And I moved here for the small-town village feel, the local businesses and restaurants that I can walk to with my family, the good schools, and just the camaraderie of small-town living. So, I definitely have found that here and intend to stay for a very long time. So, I'd be happy to serve if you'll have me, and I'll plan on attending the village council meeting next week.
Rose?
In previous times, we, the planning commission has always recommended to council for a member. Can we do that tonight, or because it wasn't in a specific agenda item?
He's already on the agenda for, we have a planning commission appointment on the agenda already. And I go to Kelsey.
The challenge here is, in this case, the recommendation came from council as opposed to came from us.
But in-
Now, I can't think of any reason why we couldn't make a motion to make a recommendation to the council that, that they appoint Kelsey, and, and, you know, that's-
I mean, because in the past, we have done that.
Jack?
That's what you're supposed to do, I think, is take the applicants, interview the applicants, and then make a recommendation to the village council. And if the village council so chooses to make that person a member of the planning commission, they would do that. In this case, Joe suggested that Kelsey come to the planning commission and make herself available to us. That's a different scenario. What do we, do we accept his recommendation or recommend?
I think that, I think it makes a lot of sense. It's a traditional thing that we do, and I, you know, I think that the, the council would like to know that the commission approves, you know, unanimously, that here's a candidate that we're happy to have on board. Do you agree? I don't think it necessarily has to be an agenda item.
No.
Well, then I'll make a, a motion to-
Well, before you do so, Rose, are there, my fellow commissioners, are there any questions that you would like to ask Kelsey, or any comments that you would like to make? Because that's traditionally what we do, too. So, you know, if you, if you're gonna turn-
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we do this during public comment? Make motions and such?
Yeah. I don't see why not.
The, the public comment does allow you to address non-agenda items.
Right.
And if she just made a request to, for your opinion, I think it might be more, also, to be more of, to reflect it as the commission's opinion, because, and I understand past traditions of the village. However, I believe in the, in the recent Planning Enabling Act, the authority to appoint to commissions rests in the executive body, so that being the council.
That's correct.
Now, obviously, you know, we, the village has its traditions, and that's one way, that's one of the reasons we'll be looking at the bylaws, to make sure that any things done in the, are, are now in, in sync with the current statute.
And that's the way we've done it, Mario. That's, you know, I mean, when I was, I mean, even Justin, when Justin was brought on board-
Oh, right.
-he was appointed by the council to serve, you know, I mean, this is an appointed body, and we're, we are appointed onto this body by the council.
Right, right.
Question.
That's right.
Jack, are there any other candidates for the planning commission on notice with the village right now?
Not that I've heard of.
So, then it would be the opinion of this planning commission that we accept Kelsey Cook as a planning commission member, recommending to the, to the village council that they accept that opinion.
Do we make that as a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Support.
All right, good.
Give it to Leslie.
All right, so, Madam Secretary, I have a motion for an opinion to the council that we accept Kelsey Cook's nomination to the planning commission. I have a second for that motion, and let's go ahead and do a roll call on that, because I like everybody being able to say, yeah.
Hi, Eric?
Hi.
Thelma?
Yeah.
Seema?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Deeg? Absen? Douglas?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Kelsey, thank you very, very much. Thank you, Kelsey, and thank you for letting me put you on the spot like that. I, I'm grateful. I know I told you I wouldn't do that, but-
You didn't tell me you wouldn't.
Yeah, I told you, I told you it might happen, so there you are. Good, I knew that.
Can I tell you, you live in one of my favorite houses in the village.
Really?
I love that house, from when George and Peg lived there. Ask him, it's just beautiful.
Good, all right, consultant, comments. Item 11.
The only thing I have is that I'm concernedly waiting on, well, received a site plan for Village Ridge condo amendments. So, they'll be in front of you. I'm not sure if we'll get them on the next meeting, it'll probably be March.
Okay.
But it'll be something to look forward to.
Good, all right, good, I like that. All right, anything else, Mario? Are you good with that?
No, that's it.
All right, administrative comments? Terry, do you have anything for us?
Nope.
All right, good, I appreciate that. All right, commissioner comments. Jack, Oxford Township Planning Commission update?
We've had zero meetings.
Okay.
And that's good and bad, but right now, the things we talked about are still moving forward, the looping of our water system at Manitou Lane, and we're working on getting the looping to drainer. Other than that, it's business as usual.
Okay.
What's the looping?
Looping is, we have two dead ends of a water line-
Yeah.
And we're just gonna connect them.
Gotcha.
So, as the county gives us our property back.
I'm hoping I'll take it soon.
Highland sign yet?
Yes.
Kelsey, I, I've worked with Kelsey, I'm the chairman of the Water and Sewer Committee, and we have properties that are being turned back over to the township that are currently under the county rolls. So, we've feverishly worked with them to ascertain those properties back in the right manner.
Mm-hmm. All right, good, I appreciate the relationship there already. Rose, anything on ZBA?
Yes, the ZBA has started the cleanup of their bylaws, and Terry and Mario were working on that today a little bit. And we still need alternates, and we still need a board member. So, if there's anybody out there that wants to join our little group, we don't meet that often, but when we do meet, it's kind of important.
Of course. All right, thank you for that. I don't know if I have a representative from DDA here tonight to make a update. I don't believe so. We'll skip over that. And that being the conclusion of our meeting, I'll entertain a-
About any other commissioners.
There you go, commissioner comments. Anything else that anybody would like to add? Leslie? Maureen?
Nothing.
Rose?
That's it.
Jack?
I have one ordinance review that I asked Mario to look into just to make sure that we're doing things right. He's gonna, under number one item, so he's got that looking at it.
All right.
I could go over it really quickly, or, or we're good?
We can get out of here before he, yeah. Quickly, Mario, please.
Basically, just, Jack just asked about the process for amending PUDs, existing PUDs.
Okay.
In the ordinance, it does specifically say either, well, number one, it says that the process to amend a PUD will be within the PUD's agreement. So, any existing PUD, we'd have to look and see what it specifically says in their agreement. But also, two, it says, the, the amendment process shall be as it is the regular approval process. And, but it also allows you to do minor site plan amendments through the site plan special use process. Basically, that means that the planning commission is typically involved in any kind of PUD amendment, unless the PUD agreement specifically says